Thank you for joining the December 3rd Select Board Meeting. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being here tonight. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on Zoom. If you are on Zoom and you have a question or a comment, please put your comment and question in the Q and A. And remember to include your name and address for our minutes. This meeting is being recorded, broadcast on ECAT, and is available for download in the future. And thanks to ECAT for being here tonight to help us through that. So with the first item on the agenda, it's a timed item, a public hearing, and Craig's going to read the public hearing notice.
Do.
I'm sorry, one second. I forgot to say that we do have a quorum. So we have Jamie Stevens calling in remotely, Craig Barger, and myself, Dottie Fulgenetti. And for the record, Select Board Member Mark Lamb and Jennifer Stacy are not able to be with us tonight. So thanks, Craig.
Okay. Due to the lack of quorum, the date of this public hearing has been moved from Monday, December 1st, 2025, to Wednesday, December 3rd, 2025. The Select Board of Easton has licensing authorities pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 166, Section 22, will hold a public hearing in the Colleen 8 Corona Boardroom, 136 Elm Street, Easton, Mass. on Wednesday, December 3rd, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. to consider an act on a petition of Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid in Verizon, New England, to install one J.O. pole on Depot Street, beginning at a point approximately 500 feet southwest of the center line of the intersection of Cross Street and Depot Street. National Grid to install one new pole in front of House 573 Depot Street, in accordance with the petition for Plan Number 31039541 dated November 12, 2025, as shown on file with the Select Board's Office.
Great, thank you, Craig. So thanks for being here tonight, Jared. Good to see you again.
Good to see you as well. So Jared Aker representing National Grid at 100 East Ashland Street. This pole is just so we can put in the side tap to that new safety building that's going in, Easton.
Okay, that's easy enough and well needed. Any questions, comments? Jamie, you all set?
No questions or comments, just a sneezing attack. Thanks.
I have no questions.
All right.
Please take one. I'll move to approve the -- all right, hold on, let me get to it. I'm going to do other things. It's right here. Move to approve the Massachusetts Electric deep doing business as National Grid in Verizon, New England, to install one J.O. pole on Depot Street.
Okay. Do you want to second that, Jamie?
Second, Stevens.
And, okay, and a roll call vote?
Deben, yes.
Barger, yes.
Fulgenetti, yes. Great. Thank you so much. Good to see you again.
Have a nice night.
Thank you, nice to see you. All right. Next on the agenda, we have an update from the Eastern Food Pantry, but Ken Wood is not here yet. So we're going to table that and move on. And when Ken gets here, we'll fit him back in again. So the next item is the Human Rights Committee has an appointment. Molly Rae Ametangelo. Ametangelo with a seat expiration of June 30th, 2028. We do have a note from her. She is a disabled veteran who has spent time working in the military, corporate, and startup venture capitalist-funded settings where policy, law, and government standards were at the forefront. These roles were at the core, bound to human-centric factors, safety, reliability, and adherence to complex laws and regulation, which held a duty to the public. All duties are performed within the bounds of human rights. She highlighted this in her grad program when comparing aerospace industry goals and commitments to the United Nations Sustainability Goals and their overlap organizations built into their respective business practices. She's been a part of diversity groups in corporate settings, as well as volunteered in other human rights organizations like Indivisible. Her accomplishments are U.S. Air Force Achievement Medal, BS and MS aeronautics with concentration in safety and space systems. So sounds like a really well-qualified candidate. Craig, you had the opportunity to meet her.
Last night, Molly joined us at the Human Rights Committee, and it was a good opportunity to talk to her. I told her that we also have a -- another veteran from the Air Force that's on the Select Board. She's a 10-year veteran of the Air Force, originally from Louisiana. And she and her husband moved here three years ago. And he works in -- I can't remember what he does. He works at a Wall family, I think. And she's running a -- she does a podcast now.
That's great.
Yeah, she was very interested in joining us.
Awesome. Well, would you like to make a motion?
So I move to appoint Molly Ametangelo to the Human Rights Committee with a seat expiration of June 30th, 2028.
Would you like to second, Jamie?
Second, Stevens.
And a roll call vote starting with you.
Stevens, Ametangelo.
Barger, Ametangelo.
Fulgenetti, Ametangelo. So congratulations, Molly Rae. And you will hear from the town clerk with information about getting sworn in and when the dates of the meetings are. Next, we have an update, the Chair and Town Administrator regarding the Town Administrator Recruitment Draft Schedule. So as everybody knows, we are -- need to be recruiting a new Town Administrator. We sent out an RFP within the past week.
Yes.
And we expect to be getting proposals back.
This week.
This week. We will probably have a special meeting sometime next week because time is of the essence on this. We'll pull the board together and just have a meeting to be able to select a vendor.
For a recruiting firm.
A recruiting firm.
Yeah, yeah. So those are coming in this week. And hopefully have some good interest from folks. And we'll bring an executive recruiting firm onboard in December so that we can get to work with this solicitation right after the holidays. And I think obviously we'll defer to the Chair, so I'm not getting out in front of our skis. But just for the event anyone's watching this after, the goal will be to have a permanent administrator in by May. We have an Assistant Town Administrator in Easton, thankfully. It's, you know, one of those positions sometimes when budgets are tight, people say, whoa, do we need one? And yes, you do. So Sean will be stepping up as interim in that period, which will be tremendously helpful to Easton for its stability, along with all of our great department heads on the board, working together.
It'll be also really critical when we do bring someone on that Sean has a lot of expertise and knowledge to be able to assist that person. Great. All right. Next, a presentation, the Preliminary Fiscal Year 27 Operating Budget Forecast by Connor.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. We're just going to switch over here, and we'll make sure Jamie can see it as well.
Recording in progress.
Whatever. One second.
We will get there.
Try one more time.
Look at that.
There we go. Okay. Didn't even have to walk too far.
All right, so thank you, Dottie. And glad to be able to give a much earlier-than-typical look at what we expect will be the outlook for Fiscal '27. Finance Director Nightingale is here with us as well. If the Board has any weedy questions. As the Board is aware, we're in a pretty tough operating spot, us and many other communities who have had failed overrides in the past year around the Commonwealth. And the Budget Subcommittee had gotten to work right away in July to start forecasting and looking at what are our options going to be as a community going into the next fiscal year? Because we know that the factors that led us to seek for the override have not gone away. And so what Wendy and I have done is expedited a lot of the kind of milestones here. I want to emphasize the big word preliminary on screen. This is very early. There's a lot of key information that we're relying on trend analysis and forecasting that we would typically be doing internally at this point because we don't have key, even preliminary numbers from the state on their budget, from the GIC for their budget. But the purpose of doing this now is to set the expectation that I know the Board already has, that Jamie sees a Budget Subcommittee, that we've been talking about at Budget Subcommittee forums, the kind of order of magnitude of what we are facing. So without further ado, looking at the next fiscal year '27, which starts next July, we have a couple of headwinds that we're facing. The largest is obviously the failure of the proposed override for Fiscal '26, which would have been the first override in Easton in 19 years. And that is coupled with the fact that although the town made a lot of really important progress in the past 10 years, building its reserve balances up so that we could mitigate some of the cuts last year. We know it mitigated cuts. It didn't stop them. You can't stop them with one-time funds. So we still eliminated 50 full-time equivalent positions in the current budget year. But the town can't rely on stabilization funds as a recurring revenue source. So our forecasting is assuming zero use of stabilization because we just simply -- it's not responsible to continue to lean on that. It's one thing for, you know, the first year an override fails. But an override not being approved does not constitute an ongoing economic emergency, as much as we may dislike the impact that has on our services.
I just want to underscore that because I think, you know, sometimes I feel like people think, you know, we should do things differently, or we have a fiduciary responsibility to the community and the people, especially that elected us, to make decisions, do the homework, do the analysis, and come up with the solutions on this. And if it's fiscally irresponsible, which it is, to keep taking big amounts of money out of the stabilization, the impact that that has in so many other areas, including our credit rating and things that are really important to us, we can't make those decisions to do things like that. It's just, it's against everything that we're, you know, elected to do or that you are hired to do, making those recommendations. So we take this very seriously, and we work really hard to not be in a position like this. So I hope that people will think of it like that.
I appreciate that, Dottie. And I think it's also worth pointing out that it's not just the potential impact to your credit or your bond rating, which increase the cost of borrowing for capital. These funds, once they're spent, we recharge stabilization every fall as part of our financial policies. But if we dramatically spend that fund down now, when we are not in a recession, again, not having an override approved doesn't constitute an ongoing multi-year economic crisis. And so if we lean on that for multiple years and then hit a real financial macroeconomic crisis, then the town will be in a substantially worse, unacceptably worse position. So I appreciate you making those points. So the fiscal pressures that led to the override request for Fiscal '26 have not gone away, and some have worsened. Really, the same thing that we were facing last year, which is that fixed cost inflation for things like health insurance, utilities, transportation, continue to grow, not only well past the 2.5% limit on our tax levy, they're growing at 10-plus percent a year in some places. And so the reality is that we have to balance the budget. And so if you have a large portion, about a third of your spend, going up at 10%, and your revenue is going up by 2.5% or 1% for taxation and state aid, if there isn't an override, you need to balance that gap through the places you can cut, which is our operating budgets, which is what we did this year. And so next year, although it obviously gives none of us any enjoyment, and we're not happy with the reality that we face, the choices next year will be a mirror or an echo of this year, which is more cuts or some type of an override. There's a little disclaimer there that these are preliminary. A lot of information is still going to come out from the state over the winter. But again, the point tonight is to really start looking at order of magnitude.
It is, but you, I mean, we have a good feeling. It's not going to be better than, you know, I think we need to look at the worst-case scenarios. We know.
Correct.
Health insurance isn't going to get back to 3% increase again. Like, the numbers are not going to deviate that far in a positive trend.
Correct. Yes, yeah, I mean, barring an actual miracle.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have every reason to suspect that it's cuts or override.
Yeah.
Or both, small override with cuts. So without an override, the town and the schools cannot maintain the current level of service. This year's level of service is undeniably lower than last year and for probably the past 10 years. We can't maintain this level of service next year. So the emphasis on our budget planning is on loss mitigation, is on focusing and retrenching on legally essential services, regulatory compliance, and public safety. Nothing proactive, nothing nice-to-have or optional. We're really at the basics here of, you know, one of the philosophical questions guiding the budget processes. Is this service something that the law dictates the municipality, not a private sector company, not a third-party must provide? Which is very different from where Easton has long been, and I think prided itself on. But it is what it is. This is what the mathematical reality we're facing. So because of this, Finance Director Nightingale and I send, every fall, we send instructions, some guidance to all the departments. This year, they were instructed not to submit what we typically would ask is show us what the cost of level service would be. How much would it cost to copy paste your operations this year into next year, taking into account inflation, contract costs, et cetera? We didn't, we're not going to subject people to that because there's no, we are not funding it. And so we direct people to submit zero or below zero. So level funding. And I think sometimes when people are watching public budgeting, they say, oh, well, it's, you know, okay, tighten your belt, live within your means, it's the same amount of funding. Well, sure, if we ignore that a dollar next year doesn't buy as much as a dollar this year, right? It's certainly true for all of us that in our household budgets, that a fixed amount of income this year cannot purchase the same amount of things as five years ago. Certainly can't buy the same amount of car this year as you could five years ago. We face the same thing. So a zero against rising supply, service, and labor costs is functionally in the ballpark of a 3% to 5% reduction in your operating capacity on top of about 3% to 5% cuts this year. In our current draft projection, and draft is in all caps for a reason, is that even if the town and schools produce level fund, zero increase, there's still probably, you're looking at a high six-figure number of cuts that need to be made. And for perspective, with the position eliminations, the cuts we made this year, that was with the town departments growing at about 1.5%, and the schools growing over 3%. So zero is even lower. Now, you'll notice in red that one of the major drivers there is free cash and stabilization being substantially reduced next year for the reasons that we talked about at the top of this presentation, which is that we cannot, nor did we forecast or suggest or promise that we would be using stabilization as a crutch for multiple years. And so that takes a large hit out of your revenue growth. There's a couple of asterisks up there on screen. Taxation, at this point, we're doing what Wendy and I call the net taxation. We're not baking in the exempt taxation from debt exclusion projects because those are based on the bonds that are issued, and they're operating budget neutral. Every dollar of bond payment you make has a matching dollar of revenue outside of your typical prop 2.5% income, so it doesn't come at the expense of your operating departments. That's something that has come up a lot. There's obviously a bit of a jar in contrast that we have a lot of construction going on in Easton with difficulties maintaining operations. They're funded out of fundamentally different revenue streams. You can't borrow from one to pay the other. And so that's why that's just, this is focusing on operating revenue. Local receipts, you'll see a 5% growth projection. That is still carrying ambulance revenue, which we know next year we actually won't have. That said, there's going to be cuts to the fire budget to reflect that as well. So that is in there now, just for consistency, based on how we have built budgets in the past. That will be updated by January as we get our arms around the new fire department operating model. So again, I just want to flag those for the interest of transparency. But what you can see here is that you're looking at a really, really modest general fund revenue increase of about 1% or 1.15 million. And when you look at fixed costs, so going down to the expense side, town, you'll see town and school budgets, assuming they're at zero, which is obviously well below the rate of inflation. Fixed costs, which we'll get into in more detail later, if those grow at 5.19%, which frankly is not overly conservative estimate with what we've seen, that's 1.8 million. So you would still have to cut more. And that's the preliminary shortfall there, 600,000. I think context is really important. You know, we did the PACE process where we spent a full year going into all sorts of detailed economic analyses. We look at our neighbors. Every year, we do benchmarking. I thought it would be interesting to just grab every single town in Massachusetts that has a population within 10% of Easton, and to look at what their budgets are like to serve a population like Easton. And Easton is the second-to-last of all 18 communities, above only Wareham, in our total budget spending. 22% or 30 million below the average of communities that are the same size as us. And Easton is absolute last of all 18 in per-resident spending. I say this not to complain or put down Easton's budget capacity. There's nothing wrong with being lean and conservative. I show this to highlight that we don't have a lot of time to decide what the next five to 10 years look like for Easton because every tough year like this has a big impact and creates a lot of inertia that's hard to pull back from. And if a significant amount of time is spent debating or relitigating the notion that the budget challenges that we face are because of overspending in spite of factual reality demonstrating verifiably the complete opposite, that is, every one of those minutes is a lost opportunity for a constructive conversation about what do we want to look like in five to 10 years? That's not to say criticism of how the more limited budget is spent is not a lot. Of course it is. This is foundational principle of democracy in our country. But when we're talking about on the organization scale, at a certain point, continuing to say the town clearly spent itself into this is not constructive. If one is of a philosophy that basically any amount of public spending is too much, that's okay. People can have that opinion. But when we're looking at kind of a comparative economic analysis, it's not an opinion to say Easton spends less. It is a fact. So getting into revenue in a little bit more detail. I really want to focus more on the assumptions here. And I should have said at the top of this meeting, all of this comes from a memo and a forecast that's online for the public at easton MA.us/fy27budget. There's some assumptions in here, including new growth of 800,000, which we now know actually was certified better, so that's positive. State aid at 2%, which we'll know more about shortly, for UGA. It assumes $100 per pupil of Chapter 70 minimum aid, which is a beneficial assumption for our forecast, but is not one we can take for granted because statutorily, the state is only obligated to provide $30 per pupil in new funding. And so if a budget that the state develops next year, which actually won't be finalized till July typically, but the governor's budget comes out in January and is usually indicative of where we're going, if that's at $30 per student, which is what the law allows, that would be another multi-hundred-thousand-dollar cut to revenue. We already talked about local receipts. This assumes a million in free cash, which is frankly probably more than we'll use because our policy says 50% of the certified balance, and the certified balance was closer to 1.8%. So that'll probably come down a bit. And it assumes $0 in stabilization. And that gets you to that rather small 1% general fund increase. So looking at our fixed cost forecast, getting into a little bit more detail. Right now, we're projecting an 8% increase to employee benefits and insurance. That is a budget that consists of the town's share of premiums for active and retirees for both the town and schools. That has really been probably the number-one driver of our budgetary pain. We are in the GIC, which has served Easton actually very well. It saved us hundreds of thousands when we switched to the GIC many years ago. And then the actual rate of growth for that budget was around 3, maybe 3.5% a year, which for healthcare is quite good. It was very manageable. Unfortunately, in the past two years, it has grown more than in the 10 years prior. And the information that we are hearing from the GIC, from Maya, from Blue Cross, and I'm sure the Board and anyone watching this is hearing from private insurers or if you're reading the news about any of this, is that there's no reason that we should expect the foot to come off the gas when it comes to premium cost increases right now. So that's going to continue to challenge us and frankly, the economy writ large. This is a huge challenge that we are facing societally. I was at a healthcare forum with leaders of many of these insurance providers, and the word crisis was, I think, every third word. Some want to blame GLP-1s or newer medication. But the reality is that the cost of providing healthcare is growing extremely rapidly, and insurance companies are following suit.
And with the uncertainty of the federal funding component.
Correct, when it comes to Medicare or Medicaid.
That could really be disastrous if that happens.
Correct, which is another reason to hold on to the stabilization funds we have.
Yeah, I mean, that's like hospitals closing, you know, like Congressman Lynch said at town meeting. We should be terrified of that.
Another area that's been growing, thankfully, it's a smaller bottom line, but the percent increases have been substantial recently, is regional and county school assessment increases. Enrollment has been growing at some of those, and they, many of those schools are beneficiaries of a Student Opportunity Act, unlike Easton Public Schools. And so we have seen that grow really significantly in the past two years, on top of the healthcare growing very significantly. So that we're carrying at 10% for now. Nonexempt debt in Easton, we've always managed very, very conservatively. We're looking at 2.5% increase there. Again, for perspective, 2.9 million is not even 3% of our operating budget. So our nonexempt debt is extremely manageable. And Director Nightingale, and the Capital Planning Committee, and everyone involved deserves a lot of credit on the tight management of that. But that gets you to a total fixed cost increase of just shy of 1.8 million. Again, almost all of that is what we're assuming for health insurance. We don't actually have those rates. We'll get them over the holidays and into January. If it's in this ballpark, what this shows is just fixed costs will grow more than what we're expecting revenue to grow. And the good news and bad news is that every 1% swing on the premium increases that the GIC adopts carries a multi-hundred, you know, 100-plus-thousand-dollar swing. So if rates come in a little better than we're hoping, then that reduces your deficit. But the inverse is true as well. So if the rates come in higher than we're forecasting, then you're adding that. So this will change.
But that's just those top categories. We also have some big spending differentials in utility costs.
Yes.
And other costs in addition to these. These are the top ones, but.
Yes.
We're feeling it across the whole budget.
We are. And what's hard is that most of those utilities are paid not out of the fixed cost budget, but out of our operating budgets, right? And so we'll get to that next. So what that means is that if you have operating budgets, which in Easton are extremely lean, we are overwhelmingly a human service organization, public service, whether it's education, public safety, recreation programs, those come from human beings coming to work and doing their job. And so more than about 85 cents of every dollar in our operating budget that we spend is on our people. The rest are things that are not kind of nice-to-have spending. It's usually things like utilities that we have to pay for. So those go up significantly, and that actually, and you're trying to keep that operating budget capped at level fund, then that's just another thing you have to offset with cuts.
Yeah.
So what is a department budget? Because I don't want to take for granted if anyone watches this later that that makes any sense. A department budget, the budgets that fund the annual cost of running the school and the town departments, like the police department, the fire department, the funding to run the Blanche James Elementary School. As I mentioned earlier, the overwhelming amount of that funding is to pay the employees who serve the public. The remainder are usually for essential expenses like utilities, basic supplies, fuel, R and M, et cetera. Departments were instructed to submit a zero increase and, you know, tying this out. Why does that matter to the public? And, you know, when we're talking about tight budgets, most people like the concept of trimming the fat when it's an abstraction. But when that trimming costs jobs and services, which is what it does, it's not as attractive. And we've seen this in real time, in this budget year, as the cuts from the override failure have been implemented and the ripple effects become more visible, whether that's ambulance privatization, closing offices due to staff being cut and just not being, there's no one at certain desks anymore. Fee increases, the closure of a town pool. We're not halfway through this year. And again, that's not because the town or the schools are seeking to be punitive. It's because this is an inescapable outcome of the revenue we have available because we have to balance the budget. So what does getting to zero look like? So the exact cuts next year are still being worked through. We're reviewing all the operating budgets, and the schools are as well. But the options should not sound dissimilar to what we faced going into this year, which is cutting expenses or programs, reducing staff by either cutting positions, reducing hours for hourly employees, which means. hours for hourly employees, which means slower public services, or closing non-emergency municipal facilities for certain hours or days of a week. Town Hall already has numerous departments that are closed to the public half or full time, because we've eliminated so many positions. At a certain point, you can't keep cutting jobs. And so then you have to start looking at reducing hours and closing buildings. We are having continuing public discussions about other programs that maybe are eliminated or privatized for their indirect impact on operations, like perhaps curbside trash or recycling. Fee increases are going to be much more normal, so that perhaps some of those recurring costs can be shifted to those revolving funds. Some of the downstream impacts of that, outside of a public service impact, is you end up with less competitive wage packages in a competitive economy, hiring freezes or wage freezes for certain positions, which then internally leads to increased employee turnover and difficulty recruiting essential replacements. Again, why does, why does that matter to the public? It's because the budget has already been balanced through cuts to departments. Municipalities legally have to balance a budget every year, and we will. We have to, and we will. But when the revenue gap gets closed with more budget cuts year after year, rather than a revenue enhancement, the quality of public and educational services that the community has come to enjoy over the past decade or so will decline. That's not to say, you know, the sky is falling. We will continue to do the best that we can with the resources available, but comparatively, those resources are fewer. And we cannot take hits like this year after year and pretend we can just keep running the same way. We are already not.
And we're hearing the complaints from people.
We are. Downstream impacts that are not as obvious. Once you reduce staff enough, you don't have the staff power to pursue competitive grants for infrastructure. You don't have necessarily the regular, the staff power to ensure regulatory compliance for things like state library funding or for education funding, which can then lead to cuts from state or federal funds that compound your local cuts. And the reality is that over the long term, and again, this is not something that happens overnight, but over the long term, divesting in education and public services will eventually hurt the value of property in this community and damage the economic vitality of Easton. Which leads to discussion frankly none of us want to keep having, which is about a potential override, which is something that's going on all around the Commonwealth. The rate of overrides has exploded, not because local officials enjoy asking for them. In an inflationary environment, none of us do. No one wants to. And in Easton in particular, culturally, the expectation has been go as long as humanly possible without them, and we have. The override proposed last year that was recommended by PACE, which was created by town meeting, and the override that was supported by the Select Board Finance Committee and School Committee, was approved by our voters as well at town meeting, but it was soundly rejected at the ballot box. That's the second time in a decade that a kind of comprehensive structural fix approach to a single large question was given to the community to consider, and it was rejected once in 2016 and in 25. And as the board has said publicly, as I've said publicly, none of us are here to relitigate or, this is a democracy. The voters spoke, that approach was not palatable, which is why the town did not put it back in front of voters. Again, although the Select Board has the opportunity to do so, the margin was so clear that it, we determined collectively that that would be fruitless. That said, Select Board, the School Committee, Finance Committee are elected by the citizens. They have an obligation to lead this community and to give options to voters on matters of this consequence. And an override question doesn't force anything. It gives choice directly to voters. And the board has committed that there will be an override ballot for fiscal year '27. The timelines we've all worked on so far, but are still to be firmed up in the next couple of months, is likely on the April 28th town election ballot. But the board recognizes that it can't be the same approach as last year, for the reasons I just reiterated. So the Budget Subcommittee, which has School Committee, Select Board, Finance Committee, has been publicly reviewing options since July. They'll make a recommendation on an override approach, which I'll talk about in a minute, on, you know, maybe a menu by program or department or a tier of multiple funding-level options, so voters have more choice than a single binary yes/no. By the end of this month or very early next month. Budget Subcommittee wants to hear from residents on what of the services they feel are important to them. You know, Budget Subcommittee made very clear in July, the board has emphasized it, all the elected leaders have that we're not, this isn't PACE. We're not going to have 40 meetings and things. The community made its will clear for fiscal '26. And so we're really just asking, are there things that are a priority that you would like to see reflected in what the Budget Subcommittee recommends? And that priority could be no override, period, no matter what the cost to services. I think it's important not to miss an opportunity to make the point, because overrides are obviously very controversial and challenging and upsetting for people to consider raising taxes. I mean, folks have had no control and no say in their gas prices going up, and their vehicle prices going up, and their grocery prices going up, and their medical prices going up. They do have a say on their taxes, right? So it's understandable, to an extent, that where there's that option, when everything else is going up, it's a very understandable human response to say no to the thing you can. But it is voters who get that say. You know, I think there's a lot of time where it's the town with capital T, the town did this. We're an open-town-meeting form of government. Every single operating budget, every single CPA grant, every single building, road, capital program, every single one has been voted on directly by residents of this community. And the total amount of revenue available through local taxes is not in anyone in this room's control. It is entirely up to our voters. And so they will have that say going into fiscal '27, and the May 18th Annual Town Meeting will have a balanced budget that will reflect, assuming we do the ballot first, that will reflect those votes, whether that includes any new revenue from any types of override or not and through cuts. So there are a variety of approaches allowed by state law on the types of ballot questions voters in towns can consider. Twice in the past 10 years, Easton has considered a single-purpose omnibus approach, which is a single yes-or-no question, broad, you know, trying to take the view of we're all a team here. If one department suffers, they all suffer, which is, from a management and policy standpoint, it true. It is true. It does not benefit the long-term stability of Easton if the schools receive funding and the town doesn't, or vice versa. Because we all work together, we all need each other. Schools are more successful with well-funded public safety. Public safety is more successful with well-funded education. That said, that approach has clearly not been palatable. The override rejection on both in '16 and '25 was not by a small margin. So other options, including some that Easton has used, two overrides have passed in Easton. I believe one in the mid-'90s and one in '06. I'm fairly, I'm confident that one in '06 was a single purpose, but I think that one in the '90s might have been a menu.
It was.
Thank you. So a menu allows multiple independent questions for different departments or services. There's also something called tiered. I'm not a huge fan of using pyramid language when talking about finances, but tiered is multiple funding levels for the same purpose. So perhaps you have $3 million for town and school services, $5 million for town and school services, $7 million, and you give voters the choice of a dollar amount. None of these approaches are perfect. They all have benefits and they all have drawbacks. The benefit of a single purpose is it can be more comprehensive. The drawback is it's binary. It's black and white. And that it puts a lot of onus on the voter to really educate themselves and read up on what would this money go towards. A menu has a benefit of it's much more tailored. You know, if you have police and fire department, you know, 1.4 million for X number of police and firefighters, that's pretty clear right on the ballot. The downside is that we are one budget at the end of the day. And so if you have that menu, the upside is choice and probably clarity. But the downside is that if only one or two things get funded and everything else fails, you will still have deficits starting 12 months later. And that can probably, I would imagine, be frustrating for voters. But again, there's pros and cons to all. And then tiered, you know, the benefit is, again, you have that choice. It's not black and white. We have heard that. You know, frankly, I think we've gotten rather limited feedback on override approaches. But we did hear through the PACE process and in the aftermath of June 10th, that having more choice perhaps could be helpful. So tiered also comes with more choice, but it has a challenge that the way a tier works is, let's say you have three options, whichever highest one gets 50% plus one is what gets adopted. So that might seem confusing, but there are communities that have used them. Melrose actually just passed, as far as we all know, is the largest override in the history of a state. I think nearly 14 million, the highest of three tiers in a tiered override approach. So the Budget Subcommittee has spent a lot of time talking about this. We had a forum a few weeks ago on it. We have a forum coming up next week, where, again, we're, the Subcommittee, myself, we're not looking to relitigate or be sore sports about the '26 override that failed, it's over. We're going to make do with what we have and balance the budget no matter what. We would like to hear from people on, is any of this appealing? Is any of this attractive? Is any of this tolerable? And if so, what does that look like for you? And so we have a forum next week at 6 o'clock, December 10th, Wednesday, at Provingham Hall. We'd really like folks to come out. There will not be a PowerPoint this long. I won't be allowed to give a presentation. And, you know, we're going to try and do breakout groups at tables and just facilitated discussions on how are you feeling about the direction we're heading? And if the answer is good, that's okay. You know, you're not going to get kind of kicked out of the meeting, right? But we do want people to go, because-
I was just going to say, the last one, you know, a lot of effort gets put into this by the committees, you know, by bringing people out to put this together. And how many people were at the last one, like 10?
10 to 15.
You know, that's very discouraging. I don't mean to sound negative against the people that came. I really appreciate, and they had some really great comments and questions. But with the questions that we get and the comments that we get, why aren't these rooms filled? Why is this room empty tonight? Like, I don't, I just don't get it. People say that they want, you know, want something different, but then they don't want to tell us what it is. We're kind of really at a loss here. And, you know, our job is to look after the whole town in the best financial interest. The School Committee is really just focused on the school, but they've been really great partners with us. And, you know, if one's not working well, it's going to hurt the other one. And it just really bothers me. We've worked so hard to not pit the school against the town or vice versa. We've worked really well together collaboratively from the administrative level through the boards and committees. And this is, this is so important. Everybody should be coming to these meetings, whether you're for it or against it. We want to hear, we want to hear both. We want to hear what the ideas are. Or, you know, this is just going to go back out to voters again, and they really need to be informed and ask the question so that they can get an official answer, not what somebody's telling them that's not accurate.
Yeah, and I think that's important. One of the questions at the forum was around, you know, what can the town administration do to push information out? And the real answer is very little at this point. Our staff is the lowest it's been. We don't have the resources. But set that aside, to your point, Dottie, while we don't have the exact precise budget next year, we know where we are. None of this is a surprise. And it's not an administration and finance discussion really anymore. This is a community decision of what do we want to look like. And for good reason, that's not my call, or any town administrator or superintendent's call. That's up to the voters. And absent that, we do have to balance budgets, and we will. And the balanced budgets will be difficult. Again, I'm not trying to scare anyone or say anything folks don't know, but we're seeing it now. And that will have to continue.
But I think if people can put it into context, like, you know, we've said before, and I'll ask you to say it again tonight, what the real numbers came in at for the Blanche Ames School. Like, I get that it's, you know, people are feeling the pain across everything. We gave some preliminary numbers of what we thought the tax impacts might be, and it came in a lot less.
That's right.
Any kind of override, yes, it will raise things, but I don't think it's going to be as bad as people were imagining. Last year, we had someone say that their tax bill was going to go up like thousands of dollars a year. We don't, there isn't a house in town that has the value that would have caused that kind of a tax impact. So it's just a lot of this information is flat-out wrong.
Wrong.
And we're also taxpayers. So like, if my choice is pay more money in taxes or lose really critical services, I don't want to pay more money on anything either, but I want those services. So if you're telling me it's going to cost me $80 or $50 or $100 a month to get the services that I want, and, you know, then I'm going to make a choice like that, so.
Yeah, and I appreciate the segue, because obviously, one of the, I think, store, the pressure points was that we've had debt exclusions pass. That's not an anomaly. Easton, Easton's prop 2.5 history has been extremely supportive of debt exclusions for decades, far more pass than fail. But operating overrides overwhelmingly fail. And when we are at the appropriation level, at the planning level, and we're going to the public after years of planning on something like Blanche Ames or municipal facilities, it is very hard to ask voters to consider a $100 million elementary school. It is a lot harder to ask for what it actually costs, which is 15 million or so, 13, 15 million less than that, and cut it too close and go back and ask for more. And so the budget numbers have contingency, which is not a secret. We explained that, but it's understandable. These are large figures, and we conservatively forecast the borrowing schedule. We assume higher rates of interest than we usually actualize, because again, we don't, you have to lead with the ugly part, I think. And our debt exclusion record seems to indicate that that's, works, which is, these are expensive and hard. They're going to get more expensive and harder the longer we wait. And we're going to do our best to drive a really good project and deliver it on time and under budget, which is what we do. And that's why Blanche Ames, although voters approved a $430-ish dollar tax increase to pay for it, actually costs $285, which is great.
Per year.
Per year. That's why where we're at now with Police, Fire, and Public Works, which the appropriated budget approved by voters was $150 million, the construction contract was awarded $9 million under budget, and as was presented to the Select Board at your last meeting, the project's 40% complete and only 2% of the contingency has been tapped for change orders. And so that is running more than $10 million under budget. And so we forecast that by the current fiscal year, the average house would be paying north of $600, I believe. And right now, it's actually $350. That's not to say the $285 or the $350 don't add up, and that's not meaningful. For some folks, it certainly is. But it is less than most communities are considering to pay for a single building now. And so those are trending in the right direction, and that's a good thing. But we, you know, this comes up at these forums, and it's okay for somebody to say, well, I don't like that those were approved and they're being built. But okay, but they are. What do we want to do about next year and the year after when it comes to how many teachers we have, or firefighters, or police? And that's really where I think we're at, is to just say, well, what are the priorities that people care about? And if we don't have folks coming-
It's got consequences too. And look at how fast the fire department changed, you know, in an unanticipated way. We didn't, we couldn't have predicted we would lose so many staff over some of these decisions. It's very hard to work things back again once that happens.
Right. So the last slide here is just giving some resources to anyone who ends up watching this after the fact. We put every, all of our budgets are public. As we iterated and updated, it's online at the budget page, which is easton MA.us/fy27budget. There's a dedicated email, budget@easton MA.us. If you have questions or comments or feedback, please send, let us know. There are folks who, you know, people are busy. It's hard to break through the noise and find out when meetings are. If you sign up for the town crier, we're not going to spam you five times a week, we promise. Every Friday, it's one email of, here's all the important stuff going on in town, here's some good community events. Signing up for that's a really great way to know when these meetings and opportunities to get feedback are. And again, the next and final planned forum for the Budget Subcommittee, before they start drafting recommendations, is next Wednesday at 6 at Provingham. So I'm happy to take any questions from the board, including Jamie. I appreciate you zooming in for us about our preliminary forecast, schedule, process, anything like that. anything like that.
Yeah, I'll just comment, Dottie, if that's all right.
Yes.
That this is really impressive that here we are, the very beginning of December, and, you know, it's what we've been targeting since July, was to be able to put forth something that very similar here, where we can, you know, while not perfect, and it can't be because there are few assumptions being made, it's really good. And it does paint the picture. And, Dottie, Echo, what you said is, I would love to see the seats be filled and people come out and our emails start to get filled up. I don't see a lot of people on here tonight. Maybe they're watching via Facebook, but they're certainly not in attendance here. So we hope this gets out. I agree. We need to decide as a community what type of community we want to live in moving forward. And people do need to understand the implications. We've really done a good job, I think, of outlining what they are and what, you know, as we try to prepare for more unknowns, it gets tougher and tougher to stabilize things. So we want to stabilize now and be prepared for more unexpected changes, you know, that will affect us, that trickle down, right? So decisions that can be made at the federal level, which ultimately affect the state, which ultimately affect our local budgets. And healthcare is just such a huge, huge concern, which we've really known. If you look at the baby boomer population and the amount of retirements happening and the amount of healthcare costs required for that group, it's a large group. And so there's a lot of, you know, things that we need to be prepared for that we don't know, that, you know, we don't know, we don't know. So we ask people to get involved and be engaged, and, you know, all politics is local, and let's get involved at grassroots level here. Everybody can affect change. Everybody has a voice. Our legislative body is town meeting. Come out and exercise your right, be part of the conversation, whether it's, you know, pro or con, for or against. We need folks to come out and share with us their rationale and help us. Help us get out the vote, right? That's the most important thing we can do right now, is get people to come out and exercise their right and let their voice be heard.
Thanks, Jamie. Well said. Craig?
I'm not sure that I have a lot more than what Jamie had to say, as we've talked about the fact that a majority of the town did not choose to vote on June 10th. And I'm trying to figure out, and have been since then, trying to figure out how we get people engaged, how we get people to understand. I saw people at the town meeting last, several weeks ago, saying, gee, I didn't realize that was going to happen. And it tells me that they didn't have the opportunity or chose not to find out what was going on, did not spend time with the PACE Committee or any of the other groups that we have put together. I'm hoping that we're going to have a good turnout on the December 10th Budget Subcommittee meeting. I know that Jamie and Jen, Stacy have worked very, very hard on that. I appreciate all the work that you, Connor, and Wendy have done to present this preliminary budget. And I will do everything that in my power to get the word out to people and to answer questions as people come forward with those questions. But I certainly, having gone through the number of cuts that the school had to make, the number of cuts, the losses of staff in the fire department, the police department, DPW, the town offices, it's a little disheartening when those things are happening and people still expect the quality of services that we provided over the last 10 years, and it's not going to happen. It's just impossible to do that. And I'm, I'm still confident that we can, we will get through this, but we need people's involvement and support and help.
All right.
So that kind of bled into the next discussion, which is Budget Subcommittee in the forum on the 10th. Jamie, not to put you on the spot, but you're the Subcommittee Rep here. If there's anything I didn't touch on you'd like to add for next Wednesday?
Yeah, I think you really did do a good job, but I'll just add that I'm excited for this next one because we are changing the format and having these breakout groups and giving everyone a voice, especially if you're someone who isn't a real fan of getting in a room with, and I'm hoping a lot of your peers, I hope it's hundreds, that come into Frothingham Hall and we're having to, you know, stand out in the parking lot and talk. But if you're not one that wants to get up in front of all your peers and talk, this is a better way to do it. We'll have individual tables with, you know, myself and Jen and Wendy and Connor, just a lot of folks, probably other department heads, certainly the schools, Dr. Gagraw and Chrissy Pruitt, a lot of people that'll be there and facilitating, allowing for these smaller, more intimate discussions to happen. And I think that really does, if anyone's intimidated by the large group, this kind of eliminates that. So I'm really excited to introduce that format and really hope that attendance is great. So please come out, Frothingham Hall, December 10th at 6:00 PM.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you, Jamie.
All right. Next, also somewhat related, is a discussion and vote on acceptance of Mass General Law Chapter 53, Section 18B, municipal red book.
Sure, thanks, Dottie. The board and Subcommittee have been discussing over the past couple of months, provision of state law that Select Boards can accept by vote, which allows cities or towns, school and districts to send a mailer, sort of, it's probably, again, it's not likely to be read because ink is expensive, but you could send a factual informational mailer about ballot questions, like overrides, to voters. We have done postcard mailers saying, hey, these are important things coming up, come talk to us or go on this website. This is different, this is, it's like the ballot books you get for state ballot questions at an election. It's called the red book, where there's a factual explanation, right? Because the ballot language is very prescriptive by state law, sort of like a Warren article. It has to be in kind of legalese. It's not always super clear what it is. So the information book allows you to just state in more plain language, what does this question do? What does a yes vote do? What does a no vote do? And it also then allows a yes and a no, I don't want to say argument, but a statement from the community that gets included as well. So you have the kind of factual information on what yes or no would do. You have somebody advocating yes and someone advocating no.
So when you say someone, you're talking about if there is a yes group and a no group, an organized group?
More than an organized group, a ballot committee formed under state law. I believe that if there's not, there can be kind of more open solicitations, but under this law, the town's legal attorney is the one who reviews those submissions. They're not picked by the town administrator or the Select Board. And yes, I think it kind of defaults. I'm being guarded here because we haven't done it before, so I'm sure there's some idiosyncrasies we'll learn as we go. But yes, it's, I think the default is if there's a ballot campaign, whether it's a for or an against campaign, would have a spot there. And if there's not, then I think the town's attorney would need to put out some kind of call for basically a very short op-eds.
Now, if we do this once, are we required to do it every year?
Not every year, but it's only for ballot questions. So it's not, you would, there won't be like a candidate profile.
Okay.
That would be impossible to do in a neutral way.
Sure.
It's for ballot questions. You do have an affirmative obligation to do it.
Okay.
However, because I was telling myself and Wendy and Town Clerk Zakhar, I asked the legal counsel, as with any statutory local acceptance, if you accept it, and so we'll have the obligation to do it for this election, whenever it is, if we find that it's cost prohibitive or the feedback from the public is that it's ineffective or the board feels, you could repeal your acceptance from the vote of a board.
Okay.
So that's where we're at. So I think it is, this is a policy decision from a board. I will say administratively, the sooner our office and the clerk's office knows if this is in play, the better, because we'll need to start getting to work with legal counsel on the administrative procedures to get it moving, so.
Jamie, do you have any comments? I'll start with you.
I do. Yeah, I do. I'm 100% for it, and I would rather get this ball rolling because we do know we've got to learn a few things along the way to do this. And if it, and I like the idea that, yes, in the future, you potentially have to repeal it. But for right now, I think it's an absolute worthwhile thing for us to try to do.
Okay. Craig?
I'm very much in support of this. I always find that the information that the state sends out around ballot questions is very helpful. It's all very comprehensive. You can read it. If any, if my neighbors didn't know about it, I would go and talk to them about it and be able to show it to them. I think it's a great idea. And as Jamie said, if we decide not to do it again, we can always repeal it. But I think for this thing being so important, I think it's a great thing to do.
Dottie, can I make one other, just a quick comment, is that this came up in Budget Subcommittee as well, is with the level and amount of disinformation, and we've all talked about it being so great, it's only going to get exponentially greater in the future, including the immediate future. So this is one way to try to parse through and get through the noise and get direct, accurate information to people where they can feel assured where this is coming from and how it's created. And it just, it gives us, I think, a better medium to get through the noise and the disinformation that's going to continue to come at us like a fire hose.
Excellent.
Yeah, and I think that one of the things that's also confusing is the ballot language has to be written in a specific legal way. Even though I know what it is, when I read it sometimes, I'm like, what does that mean? And I think that some people get that anxiety reading it. If I vote yes, what am I voting on? What does it mean? So I think that to have, you know, to have it discussed like that, a yes vote means this, a no vote means that, is really important, even on, you know, when we get them from the state, same thing. It's a nice way to underscore what people are really voting for.
I agree.
All right, so we take a vote?
You may, if you'd like.
I move to accept Mass General Law Chapter 53, Section 18B, municipal red book for use by the town of Easton.
Second, Stebbins.
So that's Barger and Stebbins. Roll call vote, Jamie?
Stebbins, yes.
Barger, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. Terrific. All right, next is a vote adoption on order taking, of order taking to complete Sherwood Drive as a public way. We voted on this at town meeting. Town meeting voted to be able to accept this as a public way, so the Select Board has to vote it.
Moralize?
Order of taking. Is that the right way to say it?
Yes, an adoption of the order of taking.
Yes. Okay. Any comments or questions?
I have none.
All right, you want to make a motion, Craig?
Sure. I move to endorse the as-built acceptance plan and quitclaim deed to accept Sherwood Drive as a public way as authorized under Article 17 of the special town meeting held on November 10th, 2025.
Second, Stebbins.
That's Barger and Stebbins. Roll call vote, Jamie?
Stebbins, yes.
Barger, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. All right. Acceptance of the minutes of November 10th, 2025, and November 17th, 2025.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Stebbins.
That's Barger and Stebbins. Roll call vote?
Stebbins, yes.
Barger, yes.
Fulgenetti, yes. Town Administrator notes?
I have none prepared. Thank you.
Assistant Town Administrator notes?
Same.
Select Board notes?
I have nothing.
None.
Nothing? Okay. Well, with that, I do want to just say, I guess, as part of Select Board notes, that I really appreciate, you know, getting the budget started this early is a lot of work. It's a huge undertaking, and I really appreciate the role of the Budget Subcommittee in the work they put in, especially Wendy. I appreciate you and the work that you do on the finances to get it done, and Connor and Sean and Elizabeth to keep this moving this far, on top of the regularly scheduled work that has to go. We keep saying it, that we've never had less staff. It's true. And to be able to still do this kind of performance, and I'll add that I appreciate the schools and the school finance team and administration for doing their part to keep this moving along, too. So it is, I just want to recognize that it's a really big undertaking, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to go into an executive session under Purpose 2 and 3 of Mass General Law Chapter 38, Section 21A, respectively, to discuss strategy with respect to negotiations with non-union personnel, Justin Alexander, Keith Boone, Wendy Nightingale, and Sean Duggan, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the bargaining units. And we will not return to open session. So I'll take a motion.
So moved, Barger.
And then a roll call vote.
Second, Stebbins.
So that's Barger, Sevens?
Stebbins, yes.
Barger, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. And just want to give a shout out and a thank you to ECAT for always being here for us, doing such a great job tonight and problem solving with technical difficulties right before we're about to go on the air. And for the record, Sean saved the day on...
On a ladder.
On a ladder.
Plugging the plug back in and fixing what we needed to be fixed. So it's a team effort around here. So thank you.
Thank you all.